Our first regularly scheduled agenda item this evening is an appointment with Michael Scannell, Health, Safety and Environment Supervisor at Lubrizol Advanced Materials, and it's regarding a public hearing relative to the request of new 207 Lowell Street Howland Development to increase above-ground storage of combustible products at Lubrizol Advanced Materials 207 Lowell Street. It is a hearing that's continued from July 13. Mr. Scannell? Am I pronouncing that right, Scannell or Scanelle? I don't remember.
Uh, Scannell.
Scannell, okay.
Actually, if you, uh, there used to be a "no" in front of it. But when the Irish need not apply.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to distribute a communication that we received today from Textron.
Okay.
And that is the original reason why we asked for this to be continued again is because we had not heard from Textron. And then when we found out today, we had the letter, and we called your office, we were asked, since you didn't have a full team, to ask for another continuance. Even though we are ready, we would have been ready. So, we do apologize, it took us a little longer to get our paperwork lined up.
Thank you, and, you know, the Board certainly can move forward without, you know, a full compliment to the Board, but in this case, we had specifically indicated to Mr. Shampoo that we understood you were going to ask for another continuance, so I think based on that.
Unfortunately, sir, we weren't able to get what we wanted from, they were moving slowly, and I didn't know how to determine when their legal representation was going to answer us. But we brought them over to our plant, we showed them all of our programs, and they have no more issues.
Great, well, we, obviously, are in receipt of this letter from Textron now, we'll be making sure that our own departmental people have a look and have the chance to review everything, so.
Now, Deputy Chief Cochran did say he cannot make the first meeting of next month, but he can make the second. He wants to be here to support it. He's been through our whole plans, he's seen, and he's reviewing them right now. So if that's acceptable, that's what we'd like to return with the Deputy Chief as well to give his blessing on this change.
Well, we'll continue the hearing. Mike, do you have a preference in terms of the meeting date, do we continue it?
I don't, and I mean, the next two meetings, it's September 14th and September 28th. As long as we have something written from the Fire Department, I certainly have no objection to doing it on the 14th, but if the Board would prefer to have the Fire, the Deputy Chief in attendance, we could, we could wait until the 28th, that's up to the Board. I have no problem with either.
I think what he had said was, because after the Danvers explosion in Massachusetts, realized that they weren't following the NFPA to the full limits, and the Deputy Chief took the point on getting Wilmington up to speed. We were one of the first companies that jumped in and said, "You're right, these whole products are not being listed on our flammable's permit," because we listed it as a flammable versus flammable's and combustibles. That's what NFPA says. So he's been quite proud in his level of effort and wanted to be here to let everyone know that we are compliant, and it's not like all of a sudden we're adding all these new chemicals to, and quantities of chemicals, it's, we're complying with the lessons learned from the explosion up in Danvers. And also, we have nothing that's explosive in Wilmington. That's the only thing he wanted to hear.
Do you have an objection if we continue until the 28th, then?
I asked before this, so he could be here.
Any, do we have a motion, or any questions or comments, or anything from the Board?
And I do again apologize, gentlemen, for not being ready the first time.
That's okay. Do we have any questions or comments from the audience at this point? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if it's the right time, but I, I believe since it has been postponed twice, we did notify the abudders the last time, but I would think that we should go through the same process now and request the applicant to once again notify all of the, all of the abudders, since this, this has been quite some time now, and I think that burden should be shifted to the applicant. I don't think the town should be responsible to do that again. That's my recommendation, whether that should be a part of the motion or whether that can be just a request.
We have talked with all of our neighbors that have communicated with us, but we have no objection if you want us to send this out again. But just so you know, we, that we have talked with them, we have an open-door policy, and part of our, our CMS certificate allows us to do that. So we've had many questions from our neighbors, and we've answered them.
Okay, then, if you wouldn't mind, please send-
No problem.
Send notice again, assuming that the Board offers a motion here to continue the hearing until September 28th.
It's almost 2:00.
Mid-2:00. Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous?
Okay.
Thank you, we'll see you on the 28th.
7:00 PM.
Uh, 7:00 PM, yes, I'm sorry. 7:00. Our next scheduled appointment is scheduled for 7:10 with Jones, Chief Floss, and Robert DePalma of the Wilmington Community Fund, and it's regarding Wilmington Community Fund Programs, Services, and Fundraising Activities. Good evening.
Good evening. I'll let Bob start off a little bit about Community Fund and the food pantry before I get into the auction.
Just as a little background information, I'm sure most of you are well aware, the Wilmington Community Fund has been in our town since 1947, and during all those years, we've asked, we've been here to offer some sort of a respite for people in need. We depend completely on donations from the community, and we've been able to successfully run the Community Fund, you know, on that basis, fund donations from the community since 1947. We, uh, we also run the, the Food Pantry. The Food Pantry is part of the Wilmington Community Fund. A lot of people think that it's a separate organization unto itself, and it isn't. We come under the umbrella of the, of the Community Fund, and that's been in our town since 1992. We started on January 11th in 1992, figuring, oh, two years, probably we'll just help out a little bit, and we can close our doors. Well, I don't ever see that happening, unfortunately. I say unfortunately on several levels, but, and that also is, is completely dependent on the generosity of the, of the community. We don't, we don't get help from any of the state agencies, any of the federal agencies, completely 100% donations from our town. And we're one of the more generous food pantries in the area. I talk with some of the people from other food pantries, some of the directors, and I see what they do, and I see what we do, and we have very, very many reasons to be proud of, of the generosity from our, our community. Now, what we're, what we're starting a new endeavor, and it's sort of been Jones' baby right from the beginning, and that is, the Community Fund is going to have an auction, and it'll be the first one that I, that I'm aware of in town, and many people aren't even aware that we have an auction house in town. It's located behind Planet Fitness, and Joan will tell you about what our plans are for that as a fundraiser.
Um, we're having a benefit auction for Community Fund to raise money to continue our ongoing programs. We assist people with the fuel, we have four scholarships that we give out. It's going to be on Sunday, September 20th, at 1:00 PM. Viewing will be available prior to the auction, starting at 11:00 AM. Denise Ryan is the auctioneer. She owns Ryan Auction Company, that's at 355 Middle 6th Avenue, and if no one knows where it is, it's directly behind the Registry of Motor Vehicles. If anyone goes to exercise at Planet Fitness, it's the door to the right. She's generously donated her time and her facilities to us for this. In order for our auction to be successful, we de, we need donations from the residents of town, as well as businesses. I received, just today, for example, two gift certificates from Sleepy's, along with a letter from the President, who sort of sums up the whole purpose of our doing it. He says, "Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to participate in the Wilmington Community Fund auction to benefit the Wilmington families that have fallen victim to tough times." And that is the purpose of our trying to do this type of fundraiser. If it's successful, it might be something that could be ongoing in years to come. We're looking for people to go in the attic, the basement, the garages, anything that is useful, that you no longer use, if you could donate it to us, it would be much appreciated. We're looking for anything from furniture, to rugs, to tools, lamps, of course, diamonds and gold, that wouldn't be refused. If anyone has a car that's running that they no longer use, we could auction off the If anyone is looking for further information, they can go on our website, which is C-O-M-M-F-U-N-D.org. We have a telephone that they can call, and our number is 658-7425, or if they go on our website, there's a list of all the Board members, and anyone could also feel free to call us if they have any questions. Ryan Auction House is also available for information. Denise's number is 988-2222, and her auction site is auction.zip. And she also has an email, if anyone had any questions, it's Ryan Auction Company, spelled out at Verizon.net. We're available, if somebody needs something picked up, they can make a phone call, we perhaps could make arrangements if it's a large piece of furniture or something like Basically, it's just the fact that we're seeking donations, we also are encouraging everyone to come down to the auction and bid, because if you don't bid and spend your money, then that's not going to benefit us either. We did do a interview with Lisa Capelli on WCTV on Where's Wilmington, and she's airing that through the month of August, so that is very informative through that interview if people want to tune into, into that.
Part of that also shows the auction house itself-
Right.
-and sort of explains the process. So if no one's ever been to an auction, and they wonder how it works, that is very informative as to how the whole process, you know, goes. And, no, they did say, if you just automatically scratch your ear or something, you haven't bought something-
Or rub your nose, you're knocking on-
That won't happen, so.
You have to have a bid card. As I said, we, there have been a lot of employees, for example, from Dynamic Research, that have donated items. I've gone through my basement and part of my attic, came across items that were gifts to me that I've never even used, so they're brand-new. If you don't know what to get your wife for Christmas, there is a spar donation that's been made. You can send her to have her hair and nails done, or whatever. We've got donations from As Good As It Gets, Staples, TJ Maxx, so they're all starting to, to come in, so we encourage anyone to go through their home, and if they happen to find something that they no longer need, we would appreciate the donation. All donations are tax-deductible. They can be dropped off at Ryan Auction House any Monday between 4:00 and 7:00 PM.
And you'd be given a receipt, too, for your taxes at that time?
For your tax purposes. I'd just like to, to thank Mike Carter, our Town Manager, and our Board of Selectmen to afford Bob and I the opportunity to make you and hopefully the citizens aware of our upcoming auction, and look for your support. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in and keeping us updated, and hopefully using this forum to hopefully publicize it more than you might otherwise be able to. Any questions or comments from the Board?
I'd just like to thank Joan and Jim for their, for their work, and all your committee and all your volunteers. You do provide a very important service for all that you do with the fuel and the food pantry and all that, and it's, it's, you should all be commended for all the hard work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks. Our next scheduled agenda item is scheduled for 7:20 with George Hooper, Superintendent of Public Building, and it's regarding the Swain School demolition project. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Manager, members of the Board. Here to give you the update on the Swain School demolition project. If you don't mind, I'd like to just kind of break it out in a timeline, give you guys an idea of how we got to where we are now. After the town meeting, we were pretty busy getting the bid documents together, so we could get our job specification, scope of work, requirements for our bidders in. On June 17th, we went out to bid on the project. This, I mean, the documents went out to central registers, so they're available for anybody to bid on the public work. You have to meet certain requirements, you know, D-CAM certification, you know, through the Division of Capital Asset Management, through the Commonwealth. On the 24th, we had a pre-bid meeting over at the Swain School, which is kind of a walkthrough, and we had a really good turnout, which I think is a sign of the economic times, everybody was there for the building. On July 9th, here at the Town Hall, we had the bid openings, and there were six bidders that bid on the job, and the lowest bidder was Jay Moore Enterprises, which was awarded the job after we verified their requirements and their certifications, everything went pretty well. On the 17th, the letters went out to all the other bidders, letting them know where they were and who was awarded the job. Again, that was Jay Moore, who I've been working pretty closely with, over there at the building. The week of July 20th, that's when we went into the building, the Public Buildings Department removed some of the historical items that the Commission had requested us to remove so they could keep them for future use, viewing or whatever. We also met with the department heads over there from the various departments here in the Town Hall, because we had record storage that we had in a lot of the rooms over there, just so they could go through, see what, what was there in the building. After which time, the other records that were left behind, Public Building transported up to Wheelabrator Incinerator up in North Andover, where those records were properly disposed of. We also went through the building to see if there was anything that we could recycle in any of the other, of the town buildings, you know, split units, air conditioning, time clocks, such, so we were able to remove a few items from the building to kind of recycle them, and then we did a final walkthrough of the building to make sure everything was clear that we needed out. July 23rd, job meeting with Jay Moore Enterprises, they got their permits pulled, demolition permit. They also notified the appropriate departments and DEP of the asbestos removal. The week of the 27th, contractor removes the remainder of the debris of the building. When I say debris, tables, chairs, anything that we didn't have any use of, they cleaned the rest of the building up, at which time I went around to the abudders, and I hand-delivered a letter, just an information, a letter to the neighbors abutting the property, where I actually got to speak to a few of them. They had some questions, so I was, I was glad to, to answer anything that they had. I think you have a copy of that letter in front of you, provide. After the notification of the appropriate agencies, we put up the DECTAM, which is the abatement contractor for the building, put up the asbestos containment areas, which is required by DEP. In the week of August 3rd, they started removing the interior asbestos from the building. If I'm going too fast, or anybody's got any questions, please feel free.
So far, so good.
Yeah. As of 8:13, DECTAM got a clean air sample, which, which means pretty much that they were successful in removing all the asbestos from the building, so they could take the containment down, and the project can move forward. The containments were all removed, all the equipment was removed from the building, the fire alarm, power, and water have been disconnected from the building. Today, I did a walkthrough of the building, just to do a spot check, verify everything, that was, the building is clean as a whistle. We got the signatures of the building inspector, the Board of Health, the Water Department, and Redding Light on the demo permit, so we can proceed. Equipment will be showing up on-site tomorrow, and demo should start on the 19th. That's according to Jay Moore. They're, they're estimating two to three weeks, which is, gives us a tight timeline for the start of school, but they have assured me that all the debris will be off the site at that time. Everything should be leveled, and they should just have some final cleanup, but shouldn't affect their parking for the first day of school. Our hope is that it'll be completely cleared off, and we'll have just a level dirt parking lot there, and then we'll be working with the DPW to pave it over. And that's where we're at right now. Everything's progressing along well. Jay Moore Enterprises is communicating with me every day.
Questions or comments from the Board?
I just want to say, George, that, you know, you're fairly, still fairly new in the position. I think this is a pretty big project that you've undertaken, I think you've done a nice job, you've dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's, as they say, and commend you and you guys for doing that, it's a good job.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions or comments from the audience?
Yeah.
Very good. Appreciate the update, and we'll be in touch.
Feel free to give me a coffee, you have any questions or anything.
Certainly, thank you. At that, we'll move to Communications.
Mr. Chairman, you have communications before you in the form of bulletins from the Department of, or the Division of Local Services of the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, specifically from Bob Nunes, who's the Deputy Commissioner and Director of Municipal Affairs, discussing our local option excises, specifically the new local meals excise and the amended local room occupancy excise rate. I know that you've probably been reading in the newspapers that there have been a number of communities that have been looking at this issue. There are just as many, and perhaps more so, that are really holding off to see what is going to happen as we go forward, and in particular, because any action that a town would take with regard to the, to either of these two excises would have to be taken at a town meeting. And so there are some communities that are, have brought it forward, who are cities, you've seen cities do it through their city councils, but all towns would have to go through a town meeting. Some have already had a special meeting to act upon this issue, others are going to schedule it for their fall meeting, and still others will wait until their spring meeting, but I wanted to bring this information to the Board of Selectmen. The fiscal year 10 state budget, as you know, added a new local option excise of .75% on the sales of restaurant meals originating within each municipality. They also increased the maximum rate of the existing local option room occupancy excise from 4% to 6%. The town doesn't have any hotels or motels, or ends or lodges, obviously, however, we may want to take advantage of this in the event that ever happens, just as we did a few years ago, when we established our right to, to have a local excise in the event that that takes place. So that's something that if the Board is interested, come next May, the beginning of May, at the town meeting, when the Board is putting together their warrant in the winter and the spring, if you want to have an item like that included, certainly we could bring that up for discussion at that time. With regard to the restaurant meals, as you know all too well, the meals tax has already increased to 6.25%. If there is a local adoption here, the .75% of the dollar amount would inure to the specific community, and it would mean that a meals tax in the community that adopts this local excise option would have a 7% yield on any cost to the meals. There, the Department of Revenue has pointed out that restaurant operators do not currently report meals tax collections to the DOR by municipality. So in order to estimate the amount of reported collections attributable to each city and town, the Department of Revenue reviewed census information about restaurant sales and number of establishments, and they established an estimate, and therefore, any anticipated new revenues used by a city or town for fiscal year 10 tax rate purpose cannot exceed the estimate that they have provided for us. And that estimate for the town of Wilmington, if they were to adopt something by October 1st, which is pretty near impossible unless the Board wanted to establish a special town meeting, which I do not recommend, would be $196,370. If they were to do it for an entire year, that number would increase $196,370. There are some communities, as I said, that have already accepted this, but for the most part, they are waiting. The town of Wilmington's budget does not depend on this. You recall that we specifically did not include it based upon the fact that there was no guarantee that it would either pass the legislature, or if it did, that it would even pass local approval, or receive local approval. So I'm really just providing this information to the Board and essentially to the public to let them know that we do have this information before us, that the creation of a new tax, in this case, comes under the authority of the town meeting. And so I will hold this in abeyance, and when we begin to discuss, unless the Board wants to move earlier, but otherwise, I will hold this in abeyance when we discuss future town, town meeting actions, and I will certainly update you on what is happening in various communities. One local town, just for your own information, that did accept this was the town of Bedford. Bedford did accept this at a town meeting on August 3rd. There are a few other communities that have accepted it, but they are mostly cities. Amherst has accepted it, Cambridge has accepted it, Franklin accepted it, and there may be a couple of others, since I've gotten this last list, I know Springfield, Taunton, and Winthrop also accepted it, but very few to date have accepted this option. There have also been many city councils that have rejected it, and far more communities, towns like Wilmington, who just have not taken the matter up. So this is purely informational, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. At the Board's direction, I wrote to the members of the Legislative Delegation, invite, informing them that the Board had recent discussions relative to the merits of supporting the particular legislation which was designed to improve recycling- the particular legislation which was designed to improve recycling rates in the Commonwealth. I wrote, as the board instructed, "While generally supportive of the purpose of the legislation as set forth in the attached resolution provided to the board for consideration by MassRecycle, Selectmen are interested in learning your position on this legislation. They specifically want to know if there is any basis for opposing this measure." And so we wrote to Senator Tarr, Representative Micali, and Representative Murphy. We did receive an email from Senator Tarr, who indicated that he would be responding. We haven't seen that yet, but we did get a letter, which you have, from Representative Murphy's office that was co-signed by Chairman Murphy, along with State Representative Micali. He thanks us for the letter, and they're grateful for the opportunity to provide the board with information regarding what they refer to as important legislation pending before the legislature. With your permission, I'll read the letter rather than paraphrase it, because I think the board needs to make a determination. That's what their intent was. "The Massachusetts Bottle Bill was enacted in 1982 to create incentive for consumers of carbonated soft drinks, mineral water, beer, and other mall beverages to recycle those used containers. House 3515 would expand the current law to include bottled waters, sports drinks, and teas, among others. Although proponents of this legislation point to the environmental benefits of such an expansion, the law will have several unintended consequences that lead us to oppose expansion at this time. First, consumers, many of whom opt not to recycle used beverage containers for a variety of reasons, will be required to pay an additional five cents for water, flavored waters, iced teas, coffee-based drinks, and sports drinks. Most of these products are already priced at a premium, and the additional cost could prove prohibitive. Indeed, as more and more communities move toward integrated curbside recycling, the most efficient program may be one in which there is no container deposit requirement. Secondly, our opposition is joined by the struggling restaurant and retail industries in Massachusetts. They point to the added cost involved in collection, processing, and redemption of these containers. Already faced with high overhead and a diminished customer base, many of these small and medium-sized businesses are being forced to raise prices, cut staff, or close up shop entirely. Finally, the cost of this proposal to grocers, distributors, and manufacturers of these beverages is estimated at some $58 million. Due to the more varied materials, sizes, and brands, handling and sorting costs will likely skyrocket. Pickup expenses may increase with multiple haulers needed to collect material. These costs could be passed on to consumers in the form of higher prices for beverage products other than those covered under the proposal. Although we recognize the success of the original Massachusetts Bottle Bill and applaud efforts to further its aims, this legislation will have the unintended consequence of further straining the Massachusetts economy amidst an historic economic downturn. With consumers and businesses alike struggling to stay afloat, we must strike the right balance between economic and environmental stewardship." So it seems clear that the board has got the position from at least the two state representatives that represent Wilmington. And, Mr. Chairman, we still have for the board, for their consideration, as you requested, the resolution that this group is seeking, and I think you have all the information now that was requested, both pro and con.
Is anybody at this point inclined to offer a motion to endorse the resolution?
The resolution is what, to increase?
The resolution was to support the legislation which...
Ultimately would expand those other...
Absolutely not.
I don't hear a motion, and I'm not...
Yeah. Very good letter.
So we'll just take no action?
Yeah.
The board also asked that a letter be sent to the two chairs of the appropriate Senate and House committees, Representative Barry Feingold and Senator Mike Morrissey, with copies to our legislative delegation and the other sponsors of the legislation relative to enact promoting consumer choice and competition for cable service. We wrote, and on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, in opposition to this proposed legislation. Still don't know what action, if any, has been taken on it, but the letter went in time so that it was heard and before the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy, when they had the hearing on the bill. We've always been in agreement with the MMA in opposition to this legislation regardless of what they entitle it, because it puts just too much pressure on municipalities in terms of having the opportunity to clearly review any of the cable applications that have come forward. I think Wilmington did a good job when they reviewed the application from Verizon within the normal timeframe that they had, and to expedite that timeframe would have made it difficult to do so in a fashion that appropriately represented consumers. So I have not heard the results of this bill, but we did send a letter in opposition as Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, at the board's meeting in July, Selectmen approved the relocation of the Office of Veterans Services from its town hall location to the West Schoolhouse on Shoshine Avenue. And accordingly, I want to announce to you, as we suggested we would be able to by this meeting, that the office will be moved on Monday, August 31st, and will be operational effective Tuesday, September 1st. We do not anticipate any disruption of service for our veterans and their families. Steps have and will continue to be taken to notify the public of this move. The Veterans Services Director, Louis Amaglia, is in the process of notifying all individuals who currently avail themselves of the services of this department, and we appreciate the publication and the publicity that's already received from the local press. As Lou has reported to me in his capacity as the Veterans Agent, that most people who are using his services are aware of the move, and we think it's going to make sense in the long run in affording people privacy and also in allowing for just a better office environment, and, just as importantly, making use of that building that was refurbished a few years ago. So I think it's a go, and just so people know, it'll be the same phone number, same email address, just that the location is now going to be 141 Shoshine Avenue. But again, all written communications will be coming to the town hall, as it has in the past. So except for someone wanting to visit the Veterans Services Office for services or information, everything else remains the same. Mr. Chairman, you have a copy of a letter that was sent to town officials from Jeff Simon, who is the Director of the Office of Infrastructure Investment, relative to the stimulus economic recovery program, and essentially what he is saying is what you and many other community officials really already realize, that cities and towns submitted details, including the town of Wilmington, for more than 4,600 projects totaling nearly $16.5 billion, and they have determined that there is now far less funding for infrastructure and municipal projects than originally anticipated. And as a result, it does not appear, at least at this point, that many of the communities, such as Wilmington, will be receiving any construction funds for those shovel-ready projects. But he does point out that there are a number of other grant programs of which we are aware, and in certain cases have made application, that are available to cities and towns. The board has a letter from Anita Walker, the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Cultural Council, and Jen Lawless, the Program Manager for Communities for the Cultural Council, just indicating what that state agency does, and also providing you with some material specific to guidance for local cultural councils. And so they've provided a copy of that to members of various boards. It's a publication that provides information on what the Massachusetts Cultural Council does in cooperation with local communities. We have correspondence from Adam Di Filippo of Verizon Video Services regarding the notice of rate change for Fios premier service customers. Customers will be sent notices by first-class mail and notified of the rate change. Some customers will receive a notice of an increase from $42.99 to $52.99 if they began subscribing to Fios on a standalone basis in 2007, and for those that began subscribing in 2008, their rate goes from $47.99 to $57.99. Again, as the board recognizes it's standard for them to notify the Board of Selectmen anytime there are going to be any changes, but we have no authority on these changes, and they also notify the consumers directly. Wanted to provide information that has been provided to us from the Wilmington Conservation Committee regarding the annual town cleanup day. This year is to be held on Saturday, September 12th. We're inviting anybody who is interested in participating and helping to clean Wilmington's streams and parks by removing much of the man-made debris that we frequently see that's dropped around the side of the roads and in various conservation-related areas. The commission will provide work gloves, but you're encouraged to bring your own if you have them, and if you have hip boots and you're interested in going in a little deeper, you're encouraged to provide those as well. All residents, regardless of their age, are invited to join on that day to help with the cleanup. It is again Saturday, September 12th, beginning at 8:00 a.m. The meeting place is at the Whitfield School on 342 Middlesex Avenue, and there is a rain date for the following Saturday, September 19th. If anybody wants any more specific information, they can contact the Planning and Conservation Department at 978-658-8238. We appreciate the cooperation from Joseph Langoni, who has always assisted with trucks and other equipment during each and every cleanup day, as well as the work of the Department of Public Works, who works in conjunction with the Conservation Commission to coordinate this. And if I'm missing any other of the major volunteers, and people know who they are, let me know, but those are the folks that typically provide the labor force for this. So everybody is encouraged to join, and if you know areas in particular that should be addressed, you can contact the Conservation Department at the Planning and Conservation Office.
If the rain is kind of touch and go, would there be a WCTV bulletin?
I think we can, that's a good idea, and let me make a note of that to see if we can arrange that.
Forecasts haven't been all that reliable this summer.
Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider accepting a gift of land, and the number actually is, in terms of acreage, is about 6.7 acres for the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission from James W. Mangano, trustee of Sinbad Realty Trust. The land is located on Safford Street, MAP 17, Parcell 6 and 7. Safford Street, if you're going down Burlington Avenue and you go by Chestnut Street and Marion Street, is a very small road on the left, and this property is on Safford Street behind Roberts Road and also behind an area of Marion Street. So that gives you the general idea of the area that we're talking about. Again, it's two parcels of land. One is a little over two acres, the other a little over four acres, and together there are about 6.7 acres of land. The Conservation Commission voted to accept this, but obviously it is a determination that must be made by the Board of Selectmen. In reviewing the parcel, we've found it to be predominantly wet, and accepting the parcel under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission would increase the town's amount of open space and assist in meeting its goals along with the state requirements for open space acquisition.
Do you have any questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion that we accept the 6.26 acres of land from Sinbad Realty Trust, located on Safford Street, MAP 17, Parcell 6 and 7.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the land as specifically set forth in the proposed deed in front of us. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, at the 2009 annual town meeting, Article 40 was adopted authorizing the Board of Selectmen to sell certain parcels of town-owned land in compliance with Mass General Law Chapter 30B and the applicable bylaws of the town of Wilmington. Accordingly, the town prepared and advertised a request for proposals and bids for the disposition of these parcels. The parcels specifically are on MAP 4, and they are portions of parcels 9B, 9C, 9D, and 9E that are located between Marion Street and Eleanor Drive. Following the favorable vote of the town meeting, the Board of Assessors established a minimum fair market value of $132,964 for the property. The town received one bid in the amount of $137,964, which was $5,000 more than the minimum value established. I recommend that the Board of Selectmen authorize the sale of town-owned property defined as Assessors' MAP 4 portions of parcel 9B, 9C, 9D, and 9E to Craig Newhouse Eleanor Estates LLC, located at Suite 20A, 5 Middlesex Avenue in Wilmington, as being the highest responsible bidder. The proceeds from the sale of the town property will be deposited in the town's capital stabilization fund in accordance with the adoption of Article 23 of the 1991 annual town meeting, should the board deem it appropriate to sell this property.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make the motion as outlined by the town manager.
Second? Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, we have a request of James Peterson on behalf of residents of Chestnut Estates to have a block party on Saturday, September 5th, from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., with a rain date for Sunday, September 6th, and we would put the normal restrictions on this event if the board is to sell, find, or approve.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'd make a motion that we grant the request.
Second?
May I be seconded? Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
We have a letter from the Director of Public Health, Shelley Newhouse, on behalf of the Healthy Wilmington Coalition, asking permission to hold a community walk on Monday, September seventh. The walk would start at the Town Common at eleven AM and proceed down Adams Street, onto Parker Street, and then onto Lowell and Main Street, and finally back onto Church Street and proceed again to the Town Common. The walk itself would take place on the sidewalks, and in addition, they would like to hold some activities on the common, such as entertainment from local kids bands, small giveaways, and light refreshments, as they relate to the Healthy Wilmington Project. The community walk itself is a continuation of the Wilmington Walks program that encourages community participation in physical fitness and wellness. So they would need the Board's permission both to conduct the walk on the town roadways as well as to use the Town Common on Monday, September seventh, which, as you know, is Labor Day at eleven AM.
And we can assume no objections from Police Department, Public Safety.
That's correct.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make the motion that we grant the permission for the walk and the use of the Town Common on Monday, September seventh.
I'll second it.
May I be seconded? Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, we have a letter from Marilyn Penny, the Secretary of the Wilmington Garden Club, writing to request permission of the Board to hold a mini-plant sale on the Wilmington Town Common on Saturday, September twelfth, two thousand and nine, from eight-thirty until noon. There is no other activity scheduled on the Town Common on that day. In addition, they're also going to take the time to dedicate a newly-installed memorial bench, which they contributed to the town, recently installed. The bench is located on the Church Street side of the common, across from the tennis courts, and it'll be memorialized in honor of their past presidents with a small plaque, and we appreciate the donation from the garden club. But the request is to be able to use the Town Common on that date.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Make the motion we grant the request for the Wilmington Garden Club to hold their mini-plant sale on September twelfth.
I'll second. May I be seconded? All in favor? Public comments. Hearing none, we'll move to new business and committee reports. Start down here?
I'll start.
I just have one quick item. I have a letter here addressed to the Board from Lucy Smaglier in his capacity as Director of Veteran Services, and it's an invitation to the Board to attend the opening ceremonies for Operation Home Ties: Faces of Remembrance on Tuesday, September eighth, at six PM. The town will be hosting Operation Home Ties: Faces of Remembrance, which pays tribute to families who have lost loved ones in the Iraq and Afghanistan wars. Gina Johnson is an artist from Lubin who sketched all of the faces of the Massachusetts men and women killed in service since two thousand and one. Her portraits have been displayed at the Massachusetts State House and will be on display at the Wilmington Town Hall. Again, that's on September eighth, two thousand and nine, until Friday, September eleventh, two thousand and eleven. I'm sorry, September eleventh, two thousand and nine. Would be honored, and this is Mr. Smaglier's letter, requesting our presence at the opening ceremonies on Tuesday, September eighth, at six PM. So just to extend that to the Board, and I'll certainly make sure that we get a copy out in this week's package as a reminder. Important dates?
Mr. Chairman, there is a rescheduling. As you know, you gave permission for a concert in the common. The New England Brass Quartet will be this Wednesday, August nineteenth, at six-thirty PM. Remind everybody that the Wilmington schools will open, grades one through twelve, on September one, and on September eight is the first day of kindergarten. We do have one other week for brush drop-off at Old Main Street Recycling Center on September ninth, from eight AM to two PM, and then again on September twelfth, which is a Saturday from nine AM to four PM. That also, of course, is the same day of the annual town cleanup, which we just talked about. And I would also note, for those patrons of the Memorial Library, and there are many, the library will resume its Saturday schedule on September twelfth. Want to also remind residents of the Justin Andrew O'Neill Road Race Walk, which will be held at the Town Common, to raise funds for the scholarship program that is given out in Justin's name. That will take place at the Town Common. Activities begin at noon time. Also mention a reminder of the Operation Home Ties: Faces of Remembrance display from September eighth through September eleventh at the Town Hall, which the chairman just mentioned, and the Board will resume its regular schedule of the second and fourth Mondays on September fourteenth here at the Town Hall.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? May I be seconded? All in favor?